Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the January 8th City Council Meeting. 2020 it is. Happy New Year, everyone. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Tony Kim from Renaissance Church lead us in the invocation. Pastor Kim has been involved in community transformation efforts where he believes in bringing the faith community together to do practical things, not just talk, but very practical things. So it's been my honor to partner with him. And then we have a very special guest to lead us in the pledge. And tonight, we have Dominic Gamboni. He is the quarterback and the team captain of the award-winning state champion football team from VCHS. Congratulations. What an amazing accomplishment. It's the first state championship for Bakersfield Christian High School, and we are just so proud to have you here today. 4.0 GPA, member of the National Honor Society, and go Eagles! So at this time, Pastor Tony Kim, and would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. I just want to first say Happy New Year, and what a blessing it is for you to be at the helm of really charging our city into a new decade and new era. The faith community, we pray for you every day for God's wisdom. And so first and foremost, I want to say thank you for your service and leading so well. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, in our hearts we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray for the Spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of God be given to our leaders to make decisions according to your heart. Guide this meeting as we commit this time into your hands, and I pray that you will give to us the mind of Christ so that you may direct every decision made on behalf of our community. And as Solomon asks, "Give me wisdom and knowledge that I may lead this great people." I pray the same spirit on Solomon would rest upon our leaders. And I pray that this 2020, this new season, this new decade, and this new era would release a sound of something better through this governing council by the power of the Holy Spirit. I pray your kingdom come and your will be done in Bakersfield as it is in heaven. And I pray blessings upon our leaders, the people, and our beautiful city, Bakersfield, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Dominic.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dominic. Would you introduce your family, please, and I'm going to come down?
Yeah, so right here, I have my lovely mother, Molly, my fellow teammate and younger brother, Beau, and then my beautiful girlfriend, Kate. I'm really blessed to have all their support throughout the season.
Thank you, family, friends, and it's my honor to present you the Mayor's Medal. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. All right. Go Eagles! Oh, let's take a picture with the medal. Come on. Here, do you want to take a picture? Pretend you didn't see this.
All right, cool.
That's cute. Yes, feel free to.
I just wanted to thank Mayor Go and all of the City Council members for the opportunity to represent Bakersfield Christian High School. It's a huge honor to be able to come here and just be recognized by the city that we all grew up in and that we all love. Thank you so much.
Go Dominic Eagles! Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Hopefully, that was not mine going off. It was. Oh, I'm in such trouble. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communication. We'd ask you to be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other times, and for safety reasons, no signs are allowed in the chambers. Thank you so much, and we look forward to a great evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have recognition of retiring City Manager Alan Tandy for his years of service to the City of Bakersfield.
It's an amazing day. Wow. And I think there are many people here to be able to celebrate and honor your years of service, and we will first start off with Perry Finzel from the office of Congressman Kevin McCarthy. And Alan, I'm sure you're going to want to step down there, and now we get to fuss over you.
Good evening. Congressman Kevin McCarthy asked me to be here tonight to thank City Manager Alan Tandy for his 27 years here in Bakersfield. I see he's been many, many places. So what we are presenting you with tonight is a Congressional Record Report. So tomorrow afternoon in Congress at the US House of Representatives, they will at one point read this on the House floor, and then this will go into the Library of Congress. So you're now in the Congressional Record. Congratulations.
Thank you. He didn't send Skittles.
No, no, just charms.
Thank you.
No, that is probably...
Thank you, Perry. And now from the Legislative Office, let's have our four legislative reps come up, and Lauren Skidmore representing Assemblyman Vince Fong will present and shall introduce her colleagues.
My name is Lauren Skidmore. I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Vince Fong, and I'm going to have my colleagues introduce themselves and who they represent.
I'm Tracy Reynolds, and I'm with Senator Shannon Grove's office.
I'm Laura Melendez with Senator Melissa Hurtado's office.
Hello, I'm Athena Scopinakis with Assemblyman Rudy Salas's office. For those of us who have interacted with Alan, we know that he likes efficiencies, so I am going to be quick. This is a state resolution signed by all four of the state legislators. It is our highest honor and our highest recognition, and it is recognizing our city manager for his 27 years of service, his dedication to Bakersfield, making Kern County a better place for all of us, and he's going to be greatly missed, and we're excited to be able to honor you today. And all of our members wish they could be here, but I'm sure they'll be seeing you soon at some point. You're not going to be able to go very far from them, so thank you so much for your service and your dedication.
Thank you. However you guys think it best.
And now we have the Honorable Letitia Perez, Chairman, newly-elected Chairman of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Go. It is really a pleasure to be here with you, Jackie. It's so nice to see you, and thank you for this opportunity. Alan, you have had a truly remarkable career and life. I know that you know that there are very few human beings who would ever get to experience such noteworthy career, such excitement, such ups and downs, a little notoriety occasionally, right, which comes with this business, as we know. And so you really are special. When I think of 27 years of service to Bakersfield, the city of my childhood, the city of my family's birthplace, I am grateful for your service. I live in the city now, and what the city of Bakersfield is doing, in particular around the measures you have pushed and the ways in which you think about being efficient in building and really pushing, I think is truly exceptional. I've watched you from a distance for a long time. I'm a fan of yours. I admire you. You are not somebody to mess with. You are somebody to take very serious.
Tell them that.
A little late, I think, is my suspicion, but 27 years, that is almost the entirety of my life, you know? In recognition of 27 years of service to Bakersfield, my hometown, Kern County's largest city, and now the ninth-largest city in California, with appreciation for the tremendous influence that you have had to improve the quality of life and guide the city through fiscal challenges, new highway construction, thank you very much for that, and a host of other noteworthy and remarkable life achievements, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community and to Kern County. Alan, I never imagined that I would be presenting this to you. I'm probably not worthy, but I'll take it anyway, and this is a small token of appreciation from the County of Kern for being a truly exceptional human being. Thank you, and best of luck to you.
Odo.
Really, I mean that so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, Alan. And next, we have Gina Covey from Risk Management and Kristi Tenter, Human Services. Human Resource Manager.
The dynamic duo of City Hall.
That's right. That's right. Great introduction. We'll take it. Good evening. So every day in our fields, we receive multiple publications that try to guide and define what leadership is, how to be an effective leader, how to manage multiple projects, how to be an effective listener, how to get things done with multiple priorities, and so many struggle with it to put all those pieces together and be successful. But not you. You just do it. So thank you, Alan, for being our doer always. Thank you for being an ever-present example of what commitment, perseverance, and following your passion can create an outstanding, successful legacy of accomplishments. And so on behalf of the city organization, all employees, and personally on behalf from us, the dynamic duo, we appreciate you and thank you and wish you the best. So on behalf of city staff, we'd like to present you with your plaque of years of service for 27 years.
And now I'd like to invite my colleagues to offer comments, and then after that, we will take the next step. So if you'd like to speak, go ahead and press the button, or do you want to go down the row? Nobody is... Councilmember Freeman.
Hey, Mayor. Well, Alan, I'd just like to commend you as well as your staff on 27 great years. I think I've been here 25, and I think I worked 21 of those years with you as a city manager, not always, you know, on the same side of an issue, but we always got through the issues. A great deal of the west side of town sort of developed between Kathleen Cook and the city, working together, solving big problems a lot, and the city always, in the end, came through and helped us with the problems, the approvals, and getting, I think, a quality developments in something that has, which I noticed you moved into after you retired, has really helped the city. I think that, I think your leadership in the Thomas Rhodes Improvement Program was fantastic and will change the whole future of Bakersfield. So with a lot of admiration and thanks, I just want to say a great 27 years and hope you stay around.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if Alan remembers when we first met. It was at the opening of the hotel next door, and during that opening, I was chairman of the Bakersfield City School Board and their foundation, and we had kind of a celebration there that evening, and I came up to you and introduced myself in your normal manner. You said, "Go away, kid." But no, I'm just joking. You managed to accomplish a lot of things, and the city is better for you being here, and I'm glad I was here with you because I'm not sure you'd have been successful without me, so... But honestly, it's been a great ride, and I appreciate you. We have developed, I think, I don't want to say this, we have developed a rapport that I think has helped, I know it's helped me, and I hope it's helped you, and I wish you all the success in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir, and Councilmember Rivera now.
You've got to love how we were all going to end up speaking, but we all wanted to do it out of order, which I'm sure you're going to be so glad you don't have to deal with much longer. But, you know, I highly doubt that I'll be in this chair for anywhere close to 27 years, so I can't imagine what that type of commitment is actually like. I think that's actually a very rare quality in this day and age. People don't passionately commit themselves to something for any extended period of time at all, it seems, and I think that's extremely commendable. I think, and I think it's fantastic that you and your wife are staying in town, and I love the fact that though no building may carry your name, and you'll drive by the Mechanics Arena or whatever it ends up being in 10 years, or you'll drive down projects done through the Thomas Rhodes Improvement Program, and they'll be called all sorts of different things, you know, and I know, and I think many people in this community know, they are, in fact, things Alan Tandy made possible. It might as well be the Alan Tandy Arena, I think, for all intents and purposes. And while I may not have served on the council at the time that happened, I think those are lasting, permanent things you contributed to the city, and I'm very grateful for that. I think when I got sworn in in 2013, I was 22, much younger, by the way, than Supervisor Letitia Perez, I didn't know what the hell I was doing, and I'm sure that was quite obvious to you and the rest of staff, but I found that you and your staff have been gracious, accommodating, and very talented in delivering for my district and my requests over the years, and so I appreciate that very much. Good luck in retirement. We'll see you around.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Sullivan.
Alan, well, you've been very, very appreciated, and I didn't think that I would be saying goodbye to you. I couldn't imagine you not being our city manager, and I think when I first talked to you, I said, "Alan, I thought you were going to be saying goodbye to me." And so this is the adjectives that have been mentioned tonight, Alan, with the presentations and the council comments. They're pretty amazing, but you are a doer. You have done us proud, your hard work. You know, you led by example. You expected a lot, but no more than you gave, and you were a hard worker, just on top of everything, and loved big projects, and you've pulled off a lot of big projects. And all of us have had the honor, the thrill and the honor of having our name on many, as council members, on many wonderful things that have happened the last 27 years. I was telling someone from another state that our manager was retiring after 27 years, and they were just amazed. They thought that could perhaps be a record in the country, and of course, it isn't, but it's... It isn't, but I understand that the average is five to seven, five to six to seven years for a city manager, and here you've hung in there, and you've just brought us to where we are now and all the amazing things that you have accomplished. And the paper said several times, the one taking, being selected, will have some big shoes to fill, and of course, that's putting it mildly. We all know that. And we'll be, in fact, I tried to find the article to get the wording, but saying that the next manager would be directing, giving the direction for the city the next 10 years, and so I thought, my gosh, that's right. You have given the direction for the city the last 27 years, starting with completing the Clarion Hotel, now the Marriott, and then, of course, our wonderful Centennial Plaza, our arena, and our theater. So just project after project, and so you brought us right along with you, and I've always had the attitude, boy, if you can figure out a way to do it, and if it's something good for our community, I'm for it, and truly, everything has been good for our community. So Alan, you are appreciated, and yes, there are going to be, there are big shoes to fill. And now we have the fun and the responsibility of finding a successor, and that's going to be interesting and quite a project, but you have made history in our city. And, you know, it's just been, I've been very proud to work along with you, and yes, you have been, just done, you know, just the dedication and the loyalty and just the leadership, and yes, you are a good leader, and we have all benefited because of that. So Alan, just thank you for, you know, we all, it's amazing, the comments and how many people really know what's going on and how many people really know what you have contributed. Now tomorrow, we get to have some celebration with you, and looking forward to seeing your lovely wife, Kate, and having a chance to meet your four children. So that's going to be special, and we've all heard about them through the years, and you've been a great parent, a great example to them, and they're all doing well. So Alan, thank you for all that you've done, and we are, we're all, our city is all the better because of it. Just to imagine and to think of what you've been able to, the direction that you have taken us in and what you have been able to accomplish for the city of Bakersfield, you know, that is, that's amazing, and that's really, really just wonderful. So thank you for all of your hard work, your dedication, and no one has worked harder than you have, Alan, and we all have now a lot to show for it, so it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Seven years I've been on the council, working with Mr. Tandy, and before that, I was a developer like Mr. Freeman and also an advocate, so I had different relationships, and so since then, though, I've learned from and about Alan. One of the first things is, you know, government has to be transparent, and I think that comes pretty easy with Alan because you know what he's thinking pretty, he's pretty transparent. He's not happy, you know it, and if he's happy, you know it, and that's very responsible to the citizens. When I first got on, and you get emails about, you know, now homelessness, and then it was animal shelter, and, you know, where there's potholes, and every email's forwarded to the departments and taken care of and responded back to, and the citizens know that the city is working for them, and that's been consistent throughout the time that I've worked with him. As you can see with staff, a great relationship with staff that I've always viewed and encouraged staff and been a positive leader for them, not self-serving, always what's best for the citizens of Bakersfield. The one thing that I thought before, and is still a myth, is that Alan Tandy sets the direction of the city and the policy, and come to find out, it's really the City Council and past City Councils. And the majority of the City Council is the important statement there, though, because if I had a great idea, but I didn't have a majority, then Alan Tandy didn't like that idea either. So it's really the council that sets the direction, but Alan was a fierce advocate of the direction that was set. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And now, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Alan, I've only had three years to work with you. I wish I would have ran for this seat sooner. I'm sure you do. That was the joke. I'm sorry. When I first got elected, I had a personal goal to take Alan Tandy on a field trip through East Bakersfield, to look at some of the things that were exciting to me, but also things that needed work. And I emailed Alan one of the first days after I got elected or was sworn in, and he replied right away. He was good enough to bring a team of folks, and we took a little field trip. We all got in a city van and drove around East Bakersfield for a good two and a half hours, and throughout that tour, listed a number of issues, and I was very impressed right away with how quickly he responded to those requests, how serious he took my concerns, those of the community, my questions and my ideas, and how diligent he was. Alan, you've always been very serious in your work, and I've learned a lot from you in the way you serve the community and serve our public, so I wanted to thank you for that. I've also had the opportunity to work with you with regards to Measure N, and have been was impressed with the energy that you brought and the focus that you had when meeting with various different community groups throughout the community. The public, the citizens of Bakersfield had to hear from you, the city manager, regarding the financial status of our city and why that measure was so important. And although you tend to be an introvert, I hope that's okay to say, you were out there in the forefront and gave presentation after presentation because you knew what was right for the city, and I appreciate that as well. I am sorry, I haven't had a longer time to work with you, but I look forward to seeing you around, and I wish you all the best in retirement. And on behalf of my ward, I want to thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Alan, after 27 years and all your accomplishments, I think your greatest skill is looking at all those councils, all those personalities, is being able to herd the cats, and you've done it exceptionally well. You know, there was a... You know, there was an old commercial, it used to be on TV for Prudential Insurance, and it showed the Rock of Gibraltar. And you've really been a rock for this community. And when I think of one word for you, I think it's stability. You provided stability for 27 years at the city of Bakersfield and we thank you for it. Now, as you leave, I know you'll continue to love the city of Bakersfield, you'll love the Condors, but more than that, you love your family. And one of the pleasures that I have is getting to meet you with your wife Kate, who's just a wonderful woman and who's always been by your side and a faithful partner to you. And I think that that has contributed to your success as a city manager. And I want to thank her for her service after 27 years, too. Now with that, I want to ask that Alan, you go down front and colleagues, if you join me down front, too, I have something to give to Alan on our behalf. Thank you. Get a little closer, Alan. Be able to see this first.
It's sharp, I want to be careful.
I just want to show it to you.
Risk management would cost on you.
Has the new logo on top, too. So this is from us, but it's not only from us, it's really from every council that you've served with since 1992 to the present date. And what it says is, "Presented to Alan Tandy, City Manager, 1992 to 2000. On behalf of a grateful council, thank you for your years of hard work and dedication to the city of Bakersfield." Thank you. So I've gotten one of these for every council member. And I thought, you know, the city manager and city attorney should have one, too. And when I had yours ordered, and when it came in, you already announced your retirement. So I was thinking, you know, I'll just save it and give it to you tonight. So we have a police academy graduating next week and they do their badge pending ceremony. You're going out the door, but we're pinning the badge on you right now. Yeah, it's on a real pocket. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you all.
Yeah. One more picture? One more picture?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. You want to do your stuff there?
Of course, just stay right there. 500 city council meetings. Over 500, I think. 29 council members, three mayors, one of them being very honorary up here. Four mayors. Four mayors. That's perseverance, commitment, dedication. And that equals legacy. And your legacy truly is enabling Bakersfield to resonate with the sound of something better. Alan, we so appreciate your dedicated service. And you've heard the comments of your colleagues, of the colleagues who are out in the audience. And I want to echo those. Thank you so much for the legacy that you leave our fine city. And it is my honor to present... Oh. Just in case you want to come back, I think you're going to need a key to enter. So it's my honor to be able to present the key...
I had to turn my door keys in.
Ah, to the city of Bakersfield. Now you're going to have a special key in honor of 27 years of outstanding service as city manager and in recognition of your resolute commitment to improving the quality of life for the residents of Bakersfield. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Shall we open it? We'll open it. Let's see, hopefully there's a key inside. I think it probably goes this way. There it is. Shall we go back there and take a picture? We'll do that. But you know, while you're going back there, let me do one more thing. Everybody needs their day. And so it is my honor, this has all those good words that people have said, but it is my honor to proclaim January 8th, 2020, as Alan Tandy Day in the city of Bakersfield. Give it up.
A city manager's job, which I have been 46 years in the profession, but 41 years as a city manager, is to give the city council credit for positives and to accept the responsibility for negatives. Since I announced my retirement, you and hundreds of other people have been extraordinarily kind to me. Going in the restroom at the movie theater and somebody stops me and thanks me or, you know, grocery store all over town, and it's kind of hard to get used to, but I'm acclimating. I'm learning to accept it. I want to make clear that there are no personal accomplishments on the list of things that have happened. The city council, both past and present, is the entity who sets the vision and who, in the end, faces the constituents and authorizes programs and activities. And in comparison to most people in the city management profession, I have been extremely fortunate to have city councils whose interest was the public benefit rather than personal interest or animosity or revenge. And 29 members I have worked for, they're almost exclusively in the camp of doing the public good and doing it, as you know, for way below the minimum wage. And so that's the start of all things positive. Secondly, I have been fortunate to have worked with exceptional staff members from the bottom to the top of the organization. Bakersfield city workers are hardworking, dedicated, goal-oriented, positive. I'm fortunate, I believe, to be leaving at a time when I can tell you the city manager's office is the strongest that it's ever been. Chris Hewitt is a marvel. Jackie Kitchen is a marvel who just needs a couple of years in diversifying her roles and programs. But our new additions, Joe, Anthony, Nathan, Brianna, Michelle, Pilar, are all great people and will serve the city well after I'm gone. Their training has been exceptional. And the department heads, you know, I can go through, five police chiefs, war fire chiefs. Truth is that the vast majority of those have also been exceptional people and highly skilled. The great thing about Bakersfield and working here has been that the city's growing and changing and is dynamic and interesting. The population has doubled. When things get a little slow, Bill Thomas gives you $632 million. And says, Bill, $1.4 billion worth of roads. And, you know, we're blessed by having Congress representatives who are influential and who help us get grant money and other amenities and positives. And so life is enjoyable because every day I come to work, I can do something that's worthwhile and that benefits the public. And that's why I've stayed so long. I was actually waiting for new chairs, but they brought them tonight. That's big. I hope I only sit in it for another half hour, but if I, if it's more, the new chairs, the new chairs are significant. The mention of my wife and family are correct. They were trying to get my grandchildren to watch this. I suspect they, at one and three, probably tuned out a while ago. But my family is watching from home and I sincerely appreciate all of the kind words and the good things you said and particularly mentioning her and the kids. This isn't exactly our tagline, but Bakersfield is the best and I suggest you as council and the employees take pride in it and what you do. And I thank you for the honor and the ability to serve so long. Thank you much.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, well-deserved recognition, and thank you all who participated. At this time, we'll receive public comments. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. Council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the public speakers?
Madam Mayor, we've received two speaker cards this evening, both regarding separate subjects. The first speaker is Curtis Bingham.
Million dollars.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Bingham.
Oh, thank you. Curtis James Bingham Senior, street evangelist for our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten son of a holy and amen father, God Almighty, to our wonderful, beautiful Lord. I'm glad to be able to stand before such a great honorable success that the Lord has given you guys. And so I just want to thank you guys for everything you're doing. I also say you're trying to put this homeless thing together. And the Lord would say to you, remember, he put you guys in charge because sometimes you get people that are going to play with you, they ain't going to agree with you, they just want to have he knows in your business, keeping things radical, wanting some type of evil leadership. So whatever the Lord calls you guys to step up and do, go ahead and get it done. And I'd like to say to the honorable city manager here, when somebody thinks something of you, they may not be able to do it, but a real true thought from somebody that mean it and mean it well in the name of the Lord means a lot. When I said that million dollars, I meant it with everything in my heart. I once, by time, asked for $120 million to help our situation before probably since the end, 1% bill was passed. Didn't get it, but the Lord granted you guys well over a billion dollars himself, all behind somebody having a thought, other people praying. So it's a good thing. So that thought that I had for you is true and the Lord knows to do with that. Another thing, it's a shame when a person receive honor. The Bible say honor comes from the Lord. You getting all this honor and that's it. No, it's not it. It's not it. The Lord say he shall reward every man according to his work. You got a day that God's going to call you in and he's going to bless you in a tremendous way according to your belief in Christ for what you did for 27 years. Just like when you see the rain come down, you know it's not coming from the water company, you got to be honest. That's Christ up there. And the service that you have done, it's the Lord honoring you today. All with your hand is really coming from the Lord. So you're a blessed man and the Lord wants you to recognize just how much he really do appreciate you for your service. One time, Moses leading the people and there were some other men wanting to be like Moses. Joshua went and told, and Moses told the Lord. The Lord put Moses to sleep and took from his spirit and put it on 70 other men to help him. So everybody don't have the same measure of the spirit. The scripture tells us the Lord had the spirit without measure because he was God Almighty. The Lord has granted you a way amount of spirit to do what you're doing. Your title to me would be the great sufferer because people that know the suffering in their jobs go through things you don't even know what they're doing, trying to keep it together. And what you suffering like that, it comes with a great reward. You truly are a strong, great person. The Bible say Jesus learnt obedience to things he suffered. And since he suffered, the Bible tells us the Lord gave him heaven and earth. So all the things you suffered that people don't know, that you know, the Lord appreciates you and they really do thank you for standing in there, for being who you are. Pray God bless you with much success. You're a great example to a lot of us. You know, don't do your work to the eye service of man, but unto the Lord, and that's what you done done. And that's how you're able to do what you're doing. You're what you call a mighty man, a real one for real, and you earned it fair and square. And being the great sufferer that you are has brought you through.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
So I just wanted to say, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Next public speaker, please.
Mitchell Rowland.
Good evening, council members. I did not have an opportunity to attend last night the public comment period about the low barrier shelter site decision that you're going to make here in the next, I hope, in the next month or the next few weeks. So I'd like to comment right now. I have looked at both of those sites, the Calcut versus the Brown site. I realized that there is no perfect site and I hope you realize that, too, no matter how long we have to look for a site. I realized that the Calcut site costs more money than the other site. But I'd like to point out, by the way, I've seen both sites personally. I've driven to them and I've looked at them personally. The Calcut site is clearly the better site for many reasons. It is large, well-maintained and almost move-in ready. It has an ability to grow if necessary. Of course, we'd love to see the homeless population shrink eventually and I hope it doesn't have to grow, but if it has to grow, that site has the ability to absorb any growth that we might need. There are offices on site, as you well know, for the many service providers that we hope will be there, mental health providers, job counselors, guidance counselors. There's room for a commercial kitchen to prepare food for the people that will live there. There's break room for staff that will work there. There's conditioned storage units for the belongings of the people who will reside there. There's parking for staff, ample parking. There's additional throughways for the shuttles that will bring people to that site. There's green space, there's fencing with security gates. There's, one of the most important things about that site, there's room for an east side police substation there. You know, the police building, I'm aware, was built, I believe, in the 1970s and it hasn't grown in size since that time. But our police department obviously is growing in size and we are going to need more space than we have now. So this Calcut site allows us room for expansion toward the east side, which we will desperately need in the near future. There's space for our future corporation yard expansion. And I also want to point out that Brown Street site borders a residential area. I've been there, I've looked at it. I'm standing there looking at the building, right behind me is a neighborhood. And I think we all strive to find a site that would not impact a neighborhood directly or immediately. The Brown Street site would do that. The Brown Street site needs modifications and additions and the Calcut site is almost move-in ready. So as you come up... So, as you come upon that decision that you're going to have to make in the near future, one, I hope that you make it soon, and I hope that you realize that the Calcut site allows room for expansion. It's slightly more money, but it's a lot more site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mary Helen Barrow.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, even if I got here a little late. Before I go on, I just want to say thanks a lot, Alan. It's been a great ride, and you haven't always been appreciated. We haven't always agreed, but you've done a great job overall, and the city is in a great place to go forward because of you. I'm here tonight, I was at the meeting last night, to talk about the homeless situation, and I know you're going to be addressing it in a future meeting, but I wanted to bring something to all of your attention. Councilmember Gonzalez was there last night, as was Alan, and they heard what I had to say. I got a knock on my door Monday night and a couple of phone calls. A homeless person who was acting irresponsibly and irrationally stormed into the mass at OLPH, Our Lady of Perpetual Health, for those of you who don't know the abbreviation. Burst into the mass, went up to the altar, and started threatening people when they tried to remo-- it was serious. They called the police department, they didn't get a response. That person came back to a later mass and was even more threatening. I've had a couple of calls from other churches. I know over at Temple Beth El, where I currently attend, we do have a security, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that our houses of worship, even though there's separation of church and state, which I strongly believe in, I think they need help too. So, I'd like you to consider that. And it's really, I'm a member of the Downtown Business Association, and on behalf of the DBA, thanks again, Alan, we discuss this matter greatly. Our businesses are really having a rough time. Some of the homeless people are, you know, doing things that are threatening. It's costing business. Some of them are actually thinking of relocating or even closing down. So, we really need a stronger attention to lawbreakers. We're going to invite Assemblymember Rudy Salas to our upcoming meeting to see what we can do to have state laws and change possibly to make it more amenable or possible for us to take action when homeless people are breaking the law. Homelessness is one thing, but going too far and breaking the law is another matter. And so, we need our law enforcement agencies to have better support and not be hindered by well-meaning state legislators. And so, we're going to be working on that as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow. Next speaker, please.
Kristi Howard.
Welcome, Ms. Howard.
So, I'm here asking for help, begging you guys to help to make spade and neuter mandatory. I drive a bus route all around the city, mostly in the bad neighborhoods. This town that I was once proud of, it looks really bad. It looks like a third-world country. We have dogs running loose everywhere, pregnant mama dogs, little puppies. People are selling puppies at Walmart. I mean, all these dogs are running the street in bad shape, starving to death and dying. There's so many dogs in the streets that we need to spade and neuter mandatory. And the dog pound, like you see it on the movies, they pass by and they don't pick up just the dogs in the street. There's dogs running in the street everywhere. So, what we need, we need to make, we need to enforce our laws. There's laws there, we need to enforce them. We need to, you know, enforce the rabies laws, because there's so many houses that we pass by, and they have tons of dogs in their yard, and they're not in good shape, and they're chained up, and they don't have the proper, the law is they have to be tethered, they're on a chain. I call animal control constantly. I pick up dogs constantly. Just in the last two months, I probably took about 30 dogs to the dog pound, because they're running the street. I call. I know that they're trying, I know everybody's overbooked and overwhelmed, but we need to fix this problem, and we're not going to fix this problem unless we hold these people accountable. We need to enforce licensing. We need to enforce rabies. There's a law, if I'm correct, that once they have one litter, they need to be fixed. Dogs are not supposed to have more than one litter unless you have a breeding license. I mean, yeah, they were selling puppies out of Walmart two weeks ago. These dogs were very thin. Who knows where their mama was? No shots, unaltered. I'm just saying, let's fix this problem by enforcing licensing, rabies. If a dog is picked up, let's make, let's get it fixed before we release it again. Let's just help these dogs who can't help themselves. You know, we need to fix this. The problem's out of control right now. There's even, in most of these neighborhoods, there's chickens running the streets. I mean, it's pretty bad. I guess that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, before you run off, your comments are important to us, and several of these topics are currently before the Legislative Litigation Committee. Since we're in a new year now, we're going to be scheduling that committee, and I'll ask staff reach out to you to get your contact information, and when that committee comes forth, that you be contacted and alerted for that.
So, I don't need to come back here?
Yeah, staff will contact you and let you know. Okay?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AE for approval. We've received a staff memorandum requesting 8G be removed from the agenda. A staff memorandum was also received regarding item 8AC, transmitting an agreed-upon conditions report. And an additional staff memorandum was received regarding item 8E, transmitting a copy of the agreement with contractor signatures.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? I received the card from Councilmember Weir that he wishes to remove item 8AH. So, I make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AE, Adam Edward, with the exception of the item pulled, item 8H, and the removed item, 8G, as in George, along with the noted agenda corrections by the city clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, item 8H. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've heard tonight that the city is in very good shape. It's very stable right now. We are in a good position, and I've heard it said tonight that it's time to move forward. And I couldn't agree more with that, except I think we need to decide what moving forward is and what direction we're going to take, because you'll never know if you reach your destination if you don't have one. And so, I am interested, over a period of time, of developing a very comprehensive, integrated visioning program, planning program, budget document that we can use for the next years, maybe 10 years, and really sink into what it is that we want Bakersfield to look like in the next 10 years. And while the consultant agreement that's on the agenda tonight, I'm sure is very useful, I'm not sure it is timely at this point. So, I am asking that consultant agreement 8H be removed from the agenda and brought back at a time that is more appropriate. That's my motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam, though, I don't, since it's off the agenda, I don't know if it was possible to make comments on this agenda item.
City Attorney?
The public comment period is over, and it's going to come back at a future meeting, so when it gets agendized again, you'll have a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, let me share the time policy. It's 15 minutes for each side, for all speakers, and it's important that you identify yourself and speak to the point. You'll hear statements first from those opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who wish to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, a five-minute rebuttal will be allowed. You'll notice the clock on the wall behind us, and you will see 15 minutes, and when it's time, after 14 minutes, a yellow light will flash, and at that time, please end your comments quickly. You may pose questions during the statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer, please give those to the clerk, and she will provide copies to the council. Again, we just ask you to be courteous to others. And now, Mr. Boyle. Oh, we would need to hear the reading of the statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
The item.
Public hearing to consider action plan amendments to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Action Plans, fiscal year 1617, amendment number five, fiscal year 1718, amendment number four, fiscal year 1819, amendment number four, and fiscal year 1920, amendment number one.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item on tonight's public hearing agenda is, in fact, amendments to the action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Action Plans. Now, there are four specific requested amendments to the action plan, and as opposed to orate the proposals, I thought that it'd be more appropriate to actually just break down what those action, those action plan amendments ultimately do. The first amendment would be to, and these are dedicated to specific housing projects that have been moved forward for ultimate development of affordable housing. The first program, the first proposed amendment, would be for the provision of 81 units. That would be the Residence at East Hills project. The amendments would provide for the increased funding to 1.5 millions for that particular affordable housing project. The second project that would then provide for 58 additional affordable housing units is for the Brentwood Cossings project. The council might remember that we held a public hearing, a Tefra hearing, at a December public hearing to provide for the potential for $22 million in funding. This would provide for a supplement to that particular funding, where the amendment to the action plan would provide for the creation of a new project and would commit $1.2 million to that project. The third movement of money would be for the 22nd Street Lofts project, which would provide for an additional 20 affordable housing units. And the amendments before you tonight would essentially create that new project within the action plan and commit an additional $1.26 million towards funding for that particular Cumulatively, that provides for nearly 150 housing units or affordable housing units moving forward. With that said, staff's recommendation would be to conduct the public hearing and approve the action plan amendments. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. How many would people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none? How many people would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action.
Motion approved staff recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Colleagues, would anybody like to comment? Actually, as a gift, Ellen has asked for a short meeting. Vice Mayor.
I just want to thank the Bakersfield Police Department for my recent ride-alongs with the Impact Team regarding homelessness issues, along with the street racing team that I was out with this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you to Recreation and Parks Department. On New Year's Day, when everybody else was enjoying themselves, some people were plunging into 54 degrees, and our staff was out there working very hard. So, thank you for providing that wonderful experience for people who were brave enough to get out there in the chilly waters. Thank you all. Happy New Year, and Alan, thank you again for your service. We look forward to celebrating you in the next couple of days again. Thank you. And at this point, we are adjourned at 6:23.